Okay. You want to make some comments on it? If there's any questions, okay. Got it. Always appreciate that. Okay, Melissa. Good morning, I'm Berks County Commissioner Christian Lineback and I want to welcome you to our Commissioners Board Meeting for October the 2nd. We're broadcasting live on Microsoft Teams Town Hall. We're also on BCTV as well as in person. We'll call the meeting to order with a moment of silence followed by a pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll ask Veronica Lepore, my executive assistant, to read the public comment notice.
Good morning, thank you. Public comment will be accepted in person and through the Q and A function. Please include your first name, last name, and municipality for all comments. Any comments without name and municipality will not be considered. Each citizen can submit one comment. Comment length is dictated by limitations of the platform being used, Teams, Q and A. In-person comments will be accepted first followed by comments submitted virtually. The meeting comment period is limited to a total of 30 minutes, including both in-person and virtual comments. This time period may be extended at this discretion of the board. Please be concise. Comments that are domain to county business will be read during the meeting and should not be considered to be interactive dialogue with the Commissioners. The county solicitor shall be the final arbiter of whether a comment is germane and should be read. Any Commissioner response to public comment will be done at the discretion of the Commissioners.
Thank you very much Veronica. Are there any additions or corrections for the September 25th meeting minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. We did have an executive session yesterday on October the 1st dealing with personnel and litigation, and another executive session this morning dealing with personnel. No public comment on specific agenda items either in person or online. So we will jump right into the agenda. Item one, authorizing under that budget, adopt a resolution authorizing 2025 appropriations in the amount of $15,000 per listing dated September 26th of 25. There's one item listed under Human Resources, authorize the appointment of Douglas Moyer to supervisor Shelter Program, County of Berks Youth Shelter. Two items listed under Commissioner Rivera. Item A, adopt a resolution authorizing the reappointment of Kirsten Deisher, Reading PA, to the Berks County Industrial Development Authority for a five-year term, expiring on December 31st of 2030. Item B, adopt a resolution authorizing the reappointment of Dr. Joanna Kelly, Y missing Pennsylvania, to the Berks County Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring on December 31st of 2028. Several items listed under the Commissioners. Item A, adopt a resolution authorizing a letter of support for the Affordable Housing Initiative administered by the Neighborhood Housing Services of Greater Berks, utilizing 2025-2026 Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement Funds. Item B, adopt a resolution authorizing the appointment of Pamela Menet, Reading PA, to the Schuylkill River Passenger Rail Authority, effective December 2nd, 2025, filing an unexpired term ending on December 31st of 2029. Once we move the action on the whole agenda, there will be an amendment on this item. Item C, adopt a resolution authorizing the chair to execute an agreement with Elk Environmental for the cleaning of the Berks County Fire Training Center's process water system and outfalls. This agreement shall be subject to final review and approval by the Berks County Solicitor's Office and shall not exceed $60,000. This resolution shall further authorize Brian Gottschall, Director of Berks County Department of Emergency Services, to execute any and all change orders that may be necessary to facilitate completion of the cleaning process water system. The total value of the project inclusive of change orders shall not exceed $130,000. Item D, adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of the Pennsylvania Commission of Crime and Delinquency Project Modification Request for the Violence Intervention and Prevention VIP Grant for the Berks County Adult Probation and Parole Department. I will recognize we have representatives of the department here if anyone has any questions for them on that item. Item two, motion to authorize the execution of contract agreements and amendments set forth on the Contract Agenda listing dated September 29th of 2025. There are a total of seven contracts. There's one with the Area Agency on Aging. There's one with the Berks County Youth Shelter. One with the Berksheim. Two with Career Link. One with Human Resources and one with the Library System. Item three, a motion to authorize the execution of payments and electronic transfers for the week ending October 5th of 2025. Item four, motion to authorize the execution of employee payroll dispersment dated October 7th of 2025.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the exception of item.
So what we'll do, go ahead and make the motion and then we amend the motion.
amended it, okay. We'll make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second? The motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Like to amend item 293.25B to change the effective date from December the 2nd, 2025 to be immediate, to take effective immediately.
Is there a second for that motion to amend?
Second?
The motion to amend has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Now, the main motion has been made and seconded as amended, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. We'll move now to reports of our Treasurer and our Controller. We'll begin with our Berks County Treasurer Mitch Darkort. Mitch?
Thank you Commissioner. Today we have an opening balance of $259,502,994.77. We have a balance declared of $3,732,528.11, leaving us with a balance of $255,770,466.66. Thank you Commissioner.
Thank you very much Mitch. We'll move now to our Berks County Controller Joe Ruttero with the Controller's Report. Joe?
Thank you Mr. Chairman. For the week ending 10/3/2025, we have a total accounts payable and total cash dispersment of $1,968,933.61. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move now to our Chief Operations Officer Kevin Barnhart.
Thank you Commissioner Lineback. Our team, our COO team wants to thank the Commissioners for hosting Lackawanna County on Tuesday at our Regional Youth Detention Center. It was well received. We had a team of four came down from Lackawanna County to tour the facility and become part of a four-county relationship for our regional youth detention with our Berks, Dolphin, Lehigh, and now Lackawanna County. So it really makes a real tremendous advantage for all of those partners in this effort. Each of us will have a certain percentage of allocated expenses as well as allocation of beds for detention as well as shelter. So thank you for being there and hosting it. Thank you.
You're very welcome. It's a good meeting. Okay, with that, we'll move to Commissioners' comments and we'll begin with Commissioner Michael Rivera.
Thank you Commissioner Lineback. We'll go over some items, I'll skip over others which I'm sure one of my colleagues will speak about. But just want to congratulate the RAC for their nursing program celebrating 50 years of excellence here in Berks County. Their nursing program has received numerous awards. They, for the last two years, they've had a 100% pass rate for the test. So great. They also were ranked number two throughout the Commonwealth recently as well in nursing programs. So congratulations to RAC and the great work that they do here in Berks County. So this past Tuesday, we, all three of us, were at the St. Luke's Leesport office, getting to meet the staff there, seeing the new facility that was just recently opened on Route 61. Great opportunity there for that community. They're serving the community in that area. Which I believe there really isn't any medical services in that area. So thank you to St. Luke's for having us there on Tuesday. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to visit RAC again. They were celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month and they had a Latin Roots film yesterday. And I don't know if any of you know Ruben Blades, Ruben Blades? He was one of those featured in the film. And it's, one of the interesting parts that I learned there was that who they, who he thought, or actually, he didn't even know who his grandfather was, but through the studies, they're looking at his roots, who they thought was his grandfather ended up actually not being his grandfather. And his true grandfather is someone by the last name of Miro, which is the most famous poet in Panama. So it's interesting how Ruben Blades, who's a singer, author, actor, many other things, has a grandfather who's also the most famous poet in Panama. So something very interesting. Had history been different, his name may have been Ruben Miro instead of Ruben Blades. So, and there's something they showed on the film when he found out who his actual grandfather was because he said his grandmother never spoke about his grandfather, never mentioned it, nothing at all. So very interesting story to see that. Also want to congratulate Gage. They, yesterday celebrated their 40th anniversary serving Berks County. All three of us there, we gave them a certificate of appreciation for the work they've done here for the Berks County community for the last 40 years. Two upcoming items this Saturday is the Run for Shelter for the Reading-Berks Association of Realtors and Habitat for Humanity. It will be at Greens Mill. Barbara Lopez, my executive assistants, will be there representing us. Maybe Larry or someone else in here would want to go as well. It's a 5K. They always have food there. Either one, you can run or walk. So it's, Barbara will go and she'll represent. But I have three more registrations. So if anyone wants to go, please let me know. You can use one of the four registrations that I have. I will not be able to make it. But registration opens at 8:00 and the 5K starts at 9:00 AM. So by 10:00, 10:15, you should be done and be able to move on with your day.
You should be done.
Should be done. Also, this Saturday at Jim Dietrich Park, and you'll see more information that will be coming up on the screen shortly, is the 2025 Guts in Glory Event. And this will be held from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Jim Dietrich Park in Mullenberg Township. This had been held for many years at Penn State Berks. This year they just moved it. Hopefully they'll have good weather. The last year, last year or the year before, they didn't really have good weather. But this is a great event. It's all about health, mental health, physical health, emotional health. So stop by, many different vendors there, activities going on. So it's a great event for the family. Again, Jim Dietrich Park this Saturday from 11:00 to 3:00. On Monday, October the 6th, Connections Work has their career fair at the Doubletree from 9:00 to 12:00. Oh, it's a lot of employers there. So I want to thank the employers that are there. These are employers that are open to hiring people with second chances or that have had some type of run-in with the judicial system. So they're willing to hire people with those backgrounds and it will be at the Doubletree. They'll be doing mock interviews. They'll be, had mentioned different employers there looking for that, for employees, other vendors there as well with education opportunities and so forth. You don't have to be involved in the judicial system to attend, but it's a great opportunity on Monday. Also, on Tuesday, we have our Town Hall at the Wilmersdorf Community Library. Doors open at 6:30, I'm sorry, doors open at 6:00 and the Town Hall opens at 6:30. You get about a 15, 20-minute update from the Commissioners, then we open it up to whatever questions you have. We don't limit the questions. We don't have any prepared questions from the audience. It's whatever the people that are attendants want to ask. So a great opportunity if you live in the Wilmersdorf area to get out there and share your concerns, ask questions that you may have about the county. One last item, I want to congratulate Lance Corporal Manuel Montez Sanchez. He is a Reading native and he graduated, he was the honor graduate of Hotel Company in Paris Island, South Carolina, a few weeks ago. So he graduated at the very top of his class. You have the picture on the screen there. So making Reading proud. If any of you have been through any of our military services and have gone through the basic trainings, they are not, not a cakewalk. So congratulations to Lance Corporal Manuel Montez Sanchez on achieving the honor graduation in Paris Island for a hotel company. And we do not have an Election Board Meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you very much Commissioner Rivera. We'll move now to Commissioner Dante Santoni.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Lots been going on since our last reporting. So I'm just going to highlight just a few that I had the opportunity to attend some of these events. Lynn and I had an opportunity to join the Berks Coalition to End Homelessness, a group of people that obviously helps those people that are struggling with homelessness. We toured with a group of people. There was a medical personnel there from Tower Health, some lady that goes out every week, someone from the LGBT community, a veterans officer that they utilized to help with veterans who are struggling again with, with mental health, drug addiction, and homelessness. But what I, my biggest takeaway from, from the tour was the amount of people that are homeless, number one. But number two, that most of the people, because we were out and about during the day and there weren't a lot of people there. Most of the people that are homeless actually have a job. I know people don't, don't understand that, maybe don't believe that. They think that they're just lazy and they don't want to work. That's not the case. These people are struggling with the issue of home, homeownership and we all know the problems there. But most of the people unfortunately that are homeless do work during the day. So I just want to give that group a real big shout out because of the great work that they provide for our community. Couple other shout-outs. I'm sure that Commissioner Lineback is going to mention this, but we had an opportunity. The Redevelopment Authority had their annual dinner up at Colbrookdale and we had a ceremony for Ken Pick. They're going to name the plaza right there, Pick Plaza. And it was a very big surprise to Mr. Pick, a longtime director of that authority. I want to give him a shout out and thank him for his great service to Berks County. We, we had another class of our three county connections. We have a graduation here every eight weeks for those people that go through job training and education, people that come out of prison and have issues there. Another class went through and we're really glad. And we, one of the highlights of that ceremony is listening to the stories that the people that go through the program provide. And it's, you know, they've been, they've had some issues, but they've turned their lives around and, and they're doing their best to get a job and be productive members of our society. I too want to congratulate Bill, Gwen, and Kristi Gage of Gage Personnel for 40 years of providing a great opportunity for people to get jobs in our county. We were just, we were all there yesterday at their, at their celebration of 40 years. It was, it was a great event. I also want to give a shout out to my friend Sam Harder who received the Friend of Reading Award from the Reading Education Foundation last night at, at the stadium. Sam is a Reading High grad, Lauckburnia grad, and does a lot of great things in our community. And I also want to recognize the Reading Junior ROTC under the supervision of Larry Perez. They've been doing this for 28 years. Many of you know former police chief and Reading School Director Rod Steffi, who started the program many, many years ago. And it's going strong and does a great job providing opportunities for the students at, at Reading High School. One young man got up and talked about how when he first started in high school, he really didn't even want to go to bed. He didn't have any direction in his life. But after joining the Junior ROTC, he's really done a turnaround and is really, knows what he wants to do with the rest of his life. So that was a great event that I had an opportunity to, to, to attend last night. And my last shout out, Commissioner Rivera talked about the Guts to Glory event that's happening over the weekend. Dr. Aparna Mealy is the founder of that organization and she was the topic of my last County Connection show. And I want to give her a shout out for all the great work she does in our community. So Dr. Mealy is a friend and I want to congratulate and thank her and give her a shout out. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Commissioner Santoni. Number of items I'll go over quickly. A couple of weeks ago, Veronica and I went up to Hawk Mountain for two different events. The first thing we did was a BCTV show with Sean Grace, the President of Hawk Mountain Sanctuary, along with Mary Linkovich, who is in charge of development and fundraising. Mary's been there for many years. Had a great time. That show will be running, I think in the next one or two weeks on BCTV. Once it does, I always try to take the link and post it up on my social media. I know Hawk Mountain's planning to post it up on theirs. It focused on the proposed new visitor center. The visitor center that is there right now is not ADA accessible. The bathrooms aren't ADA accessible. It has some serious issues. It's the oldest structure there. It was the first building built. So it definitely needs to be replaced. We had a follow-up meeting that included Pam Menet. Was Jamie Perez with us? Jamie Perez from the RDA? Looking at the possibility of different types of funding sources. RCAP, LSA, LS4. So looking at all the different options. Everyone was really impressed and neither of them had been up there before. I encourage people, if you have not been to Hawk Mountain, it is a real gem in the northern part of the county. The bulk of the sanctuary is in Albany Township in Berks County. But there's another part called the Yocopian Center that is just north of that in Schuylkill County. It is the very first raptor sanctuary in the world and it is considered the premier raptor sanctuary in the world today. The Yocopian Center has a very large library. Scientists come from all over the world and interns come from all over the world. Just a pretty amazing place. I happen to be a member up there and love to hike all the different trails. The Commissioners also had a visit up at Kutztown University with the new Kutztown President, Dr. Phil Cavalier. Very impressive gentleman. Unlike some college presidents, and I'm not talking about any locally, but very down-to-earth. Talked to us about concerns he has about Kutztown not connecting as well as he wants to see it connect with the city of Reading, doing more with Reading Area Community College. Sandy Green set that up. Some people know Sandy. She does a lot of work at the university, but she's the former mayor of the borough of Kutztown. Great visit, really had some great discussions. St. Luke's visit earlier this week was fantastic. It's, I think, it's great to see more competition in the healthcare arena here in Berks County. That's not to take anything away from Tower Health and Reading Hospital or Penn State St. Joe's. But St. Luke's has a very strong presence. They've been up in the Hamburg area for quite some time. They're now down in Leesport and that is not just their urgent care. It's physical therapy. It's primary docs, specialty docs, orthopedic, podiatry, a number of other specialty areas. So that's, that's a good thing to see. Last Saturday, I was able to be over at Easy Does It to kick off their Soberstock Celebration. The band that kicked everything off was Liquid A, a group I'm not familiar with. But for people that aren't aware, Soberstock happens every year right around this time to show that you can have a lot of fun. You can rock without drugs and alcohol. It's great, great turnout, great turnout of partners and folks enjoying the time. After that, I went over to the Cultural Diversity Festival at City Park. Talked to Pam Menet. Pam was there with a table for planning, seeking input on the plan. I think a lot of people are aware that there's a survey out. And so she was doing a good job there. Talked to a number of other folks that were present for that event as well. Over the last month roughly, Veronica and I have been involved with virtually all of the homeless advocates preparing for Code Blue. I am involved from an informational standpoint, but they are gearing up for this year's Code Blue. Probably will begin sometime in November, go through March or April, looking for locations for temporary shelter for women, children, and men, preferably separate facilities. Next year, there's a commitment that they're going to start a lot earlier. This one, for whatever reason, started late and it's clearly creating some challenges around providing accessible space for Code Blue. Last week, we had the annual dinner with the Redevelopment Authority at the Colbrookdale Railroad. And this has been in the works for a long time. Ken Pick, many years ago, I don't know how long ago it was, Commissioner, at the time Commissioner Barnhart, Commissioner Scott, myself, were looking at the Colbrookdale Railroad, trying to figure out the best way to manage this. And I'm 99% certain you came up with the idea, instead of the Commissioners trying to figure out on a day-to-day basis how to run this, why not have the Redevelopment Authority take over ownership of the railroad? That happened. They've been running it ever since in conjunction with Nathaniel Guest and the Colbrookdale Railroad Trust. The trust in appreciation for all that Ken Pick has done, and I am certain, because I asked Ken, Ken could have never imagined when we took office that he and the RDA would own a railroad. But we dedicated Pick Plaza, which is kind of a centerpiece, a large flagpole, American flag, bronze plaque that was placed. And being able to be part of that, I can tell you Ken Pick had no clue that this was going to happen. He was very moved by it. His wife Pamela was there as well. So that was a really great event. All three Commissioners were able to participate in the unveiling of the plaque. And we do appreciate all that Ken Pick has done and the RDA Board. The last thing I'll touch on, Bill and Gwen Gage and Kristi Gage Linderman. Uh, we, it was great to be with them yesterday, uh, early evening at Gage Personnel, celebrating forty years. Uh, it was kind of funny. I, I don't know if you weren't at the GRC, yeah, you were at the GRCA breakfast. It felt like everyone that was at the GRCA breakfast yesterday morning was at the Gage event in the evening. And I mean, I mean, it was almost eerie. Uh, the people that were, it was the same group of people. But uh, Bill and Gwen Gage just are amazing folks. Uh, Gwen has largely stepped us, uh, away from the uh, business and talking to Christie Gage Linderman, who is uh, the president uh, of uh, the organization. She said her dad's having difficulty stepping away from the business, and I can understand that retirement. Uh, you think about it, you, at least I think about this, and at sixty-six, I'm not going to retire, and why would I retire? But uh, Christie Gage Linderman is running the operation, doing a great job. Uh, and we were able to be there, not just to celebrate with them, we were able to present a certificate. Uh, they were, they were surprised by that, very pleased, uh, got a photo. Uh, and hopefully at some time, they said they'll get that uh, photo to us. But congratulations to the entire family. There's nothing quite like a family business. Uh, and sometimes family can be tough to work together. But uh, when you see multi-generational family businesses, it's pretty, pretty exciting in any community. So that's all that I have. Uh, move to any comments from our row officers?
I don't have anything at this time.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just to add to that, uh, on Friday night, you had a very busy last couple of weeks, but we were at the Berks County um, Farm Bureau Dinner.
That's correct.
Forgot about that. Great organization, um, that's like all the, the farming community uh, organizations. And of course, they're always looking for new members and help and everything else, but very nice event there where uh, we had the opportunity to uh, participate. Chairman Lineback gave some, some really good comments uh, to the Farm Bureau members. And um, so anyway, just wanted to mention that.
Thank you very much, Joe. That was a wonderful event. Uh, I think it was Catherine's catering. I, I loved the, the potato filling. Absolutely great stuff, uh, great food and a great fellowship. I, there were some lively debates around uh, some issues that came up that went down in flames, I think, with no votes. But uh, just to give you an example, uh, two of them, one was uh, somebody wanted to see horse and buggies licensed. Another one was, uh, and this is more complicated, uh, custom farming. I don't know if you know what that is, but there are uh, businesses that buy multiple combines and other uh, farm implements, and they go around farm to farm to do the harvest. So it saves the, the farm operation actually buying a four hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment. And uh, they wanted to get some special licensing for custom farmers. And we got to listen to a conversation, how do you define a custom farmer? If I uh, help my neighboring farm, he has some equipment that I don't have. I have equipment that they don't have. You're going to make me get that license? That thing went down in, in flames as well. But it's, it's, it's very interesting when you're listening to a debate of people that are, they're in the business every day, day in and day out. And there's some colorful folks uh, in our Farm Bureau that make it fun.
They, they absolutely do. The, the other, the, the commitment um, of um, Paul Hartman, he's also serving as the, as the state, um, I guess the state delegate.
Yes, he is.
Berks County with the PA Farm Bureau and all of his hard work. Uh, and, and um, also the um, I'm, his name's escaping me. You'll be probably, the president of the organization.
Larry Kelsinger.
Yeah, he had, uh, commented eighteen years, he's been the president.
The president, he wants somebody else to step up.
Someone else to step up.
Yes, he does. I think Sherri Furman's going to be the president there in the near future from Wild Tea. Uh, she's on the board now. Uh, she's, she's doing a good job uh, with that. So thank you for bringing that up.
Sure.
Any public comment? Nothing in person, nothing online? That brings us to the end of our published agenda.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.